Call to order of the Los Alamos City Council, regular meeting for Monday, May 17th at 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please do a roll call? Here?
Here.
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 Next, Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Councilmember Dobie with the invocation. Sorry.
Please join me as we salute the flag. Ready, begin.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I just thank you for another opportunity to gather and then given the honor of making decisions that impact and affect our city. I lift up all of our first responders, all of our military personnel, all of our essential workers. I thank you that you would give us the wisdom that we need to make decisions to make the happenings in our city better for our residents. I thank you in advance that none of us would come from a place of greed or selfishness or our own desires, but we would be diligent in doing what is the absolute and utmost best for those that live in our lovely Los Alamos. I thank you in advance for what you'll use each of us for. Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, next, we have a presentation of a Volunteer Merit Award to John Bishop, Chief Executive Officer of Memorial Care. Mr. Bishop, if you can come up, along with the Parks and Recreation Commission as well. Counsel, you're free to join if you want, or stay seated?
We'll let you handle it.
Okay, all right.
Memori- hello? Memorial Care Chiller- Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, is dedicated to exclusively to the quality and compassionate care of kids and expectant mothers. Both of my children were born there, so I know all about that. They provide specialized pediatric care for children and young adults with conditions ranging from common to complex, as well as maternity care for expectant mothers, all under one roof. For the past two years, Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, has been a generous partner of the City of Los Alamos Recreation and Community Services Department's special events and programs. With their support, the city has been able to continue offering Spring Carnival, Music and Movies, Trunk or Treat, Winter Wonderland, Serve Los Al Health Expo, Family Day, Sports and Rec, the Recreation Scholarship Program, and new events such as Film and Food Fest and celebrating our 90720 ZIP code. The City of Los Alamos is so grateful to Memorial Care and looks forward to many years of partnership. Tonight, we invite the Los Al Parks Recreation and Culture Arts Commission to join us. They are up here, thank you, to present this award of the California Parks and Recreation Society's District 10 Volunteer Merit Award to CEO of Memorial Care, John Bishop.
You guys want to come in here? Come closer.
I'm John. We're very honored to receive this award from the California Parks and Recreation Society, District 10. Even before the pandemic, childhood diabetes and obesity rates were on the rise, and then the pandemic hit, and it created a whole new set of issues that caused everyone, the community, to come together with the healthcare providers, and unfortunately, screen time for kids increased. And so coming out of the pandemic now, and I'd like to knock on wood and say we're on our way, it shows just how valuable the relationships between the communities and children's hospitals are. Our shared vision with you is to keep kids active, safe, and it's more important now than ever, because I will tell you that we have seen the impact of the sedentary lifestyle. We're seeing more broken bones, strains, sports-related injuries, and it is because of the more sedentary lifestyle, and I'm not talking about myself. But in all seriousness, the positive impact that these programs have on the youth is just so tremendously important, and so taking care of our kids is, there's really nothing more important than that. So, thank you again. I feel very proud to be part of this shared vision, and we appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Parks and Recreation Commission, you can stay up here, please. Commissioners. Next, we have a presentation from Frank Carson, California Parks and Recreation Society to the, for the 2020 Award in Excellence in Creating Communities, Serve Los and Marketing and Communications to the Los Al Recreation, for Los Alamos Recreation Social Media. We can do either way. Come on, come on up.
If I could also invite the Serve Los Al Committee to come up here and be recognized. I know there's some in the crowd. So, this is a state award, and this is given to very distinguished communities for something awards, so it's an honor for me to be here. I drove over 100 miles to be here today. The Serve Los Al Annual Citywide Volunteer Service Event began about four years ago, and it, the City of Los Alamos is, per capita, has the most nonprofits out of all the 34 incorporated cities here in Orange County. Had to look up how many incorporated cities to get that right. It's a group of the school district, nonprofit cities, the faith-based community, Chamber of Commerce, and local sponsor organizations. They meet monthly. They do identify projects to then tackle as part of their Serve Los Al special event that they have, and this works well when, if you, for capacity building purposes, to actually get bigger projects done. You have volunteers that want to do some good, and this is a great way to do it. Many of the nonprofits provide essential living supplies, as well as toys and other items, and the city also recognizes the importance of doing more things like this when they're doing the backpack giveaways for the school district. Volunteers are able to volunteer year-round, and the city's executive team and recreation team also provide a lot of special projects and volunteer their time for it. I do want to congratulate and would like to present this to the committee, the CPRS Creating Award of Excellence for Serve Los Al. Here's the Unique Mosaic Award. My name's Frank Carson. I know, I was feeling it. Thank you again, Serve Los Al Committee. So, this is a unique award, and this is something really special, something that I watch from afar. I personally definitely recognize the City of Los Alamos as part of the CPRS Award on, as the executive team, as a state member, for all that engaging their community through the Virtual Recreation Center Program, creating over 100 videos to be posted online, and other city departments to jump in and offer challenges. This was something really cool to watch the city actually do, and basically do a big pivot and big shifts to still connect their community to so many projects that you have going on here, and it's also pretty neat to come here and see that you're actually meeting in the community center, and it's becoming engaged like this also. So, I would like to present the city with the Marketing and Communications Digital Media, Web Social Media Class One Award to the City of Los Alamos for this. Congratulations, Emily, for this also. This is a very big push that they did throughout, and keeping, they, this is something that a lot of people in public industry either didn't do that much or were heavily engaged, and this is something that the city was heavily engaged with, so it's a big honor to present this to you also, Emily.
I just want to thank Frank Carson, driving from El Cajon. He is our CPRS President-elect, and this was a special favor that he did to present, and I really appreciate it, and the team at the Recreation Department, a couple team members, they honestly did all the work. They're just an incredible team to work with. Congrats to you all.
Thank you. Congratulations. Communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may, is there a echo? There is an echo, okay. Any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Good evening.
Liability Program Services. You recently had an RFP out, or Third Party Administrator, for general liability. Let me see. I have been involved as a claims adjuster for about 50 years. Last 30 years was specifically in litigation matters, specifically of significant. I was litigation manager for IC RMA, which many may recognize, and I also was litigation manager for BICEP. In looking at the bidding process, I find myself in the interesting position of not being the most expensive and not being the cheapest. But let me point out that not being the cheapest is not necessarily to your benefit. It's our belief that as a third party administrator, we have responsibilities to your citizenry, but we also have responsibilities to the city. Our job is not simply to say yes, no, go away, file your lawsuit, but rather to engage with the claimant. Then come back and explain why I think that to be true to the members of the council, so that your citizens are actually served, as opposed to simply giving it down the road until some type of litigation takes place. Our support services are not just me as a litigation manager, and what I will tell you is, I will review every one of the cases that's filed against the city. I have had cases in which I've been able to negotiate on, for example, excessive force cases that were valued at $2.5 million, and I settled them for $500. Value, but we're going to litigation, in which we were able to fairly talk to the person that was injured, the prob- Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Let off the cup, but again, I didn't even-
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Oral communications? No. With that, we will move to Council Communications. Councilmember Nefolda, I'll pick on you first.
Sure, thank you. Just want to extend my congratulations to Emeline and the Recreation Community Services Department. Great job. I was a former commissioner, so I've worked with them in the past, and you do a great job. I saw the slides of all the upcoming events, and I can't wait, especially as we open up more and more and have some in-person events for the kids. It's going to be great. In April, April 29th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and, first meeting, first time I've attended one of those, and it was a pretty good event. I mean, there was speakers from the American Cancer Society, the Casa Youth Shelter, Grateful Hearts, Precious Life Shelter, and the, there was one other, and I can't remember, but yeah, the Youth Center. And I can't tell you how impassioned these speakers were and how dedicated it seemed to providing services to members of our community and the community at large. So, I was very impressed by that, and I'm happy that there's organizations out like that that are of service to our community. I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Just before we move on, is there, is that TV, is the volume on that TV on, or is? Thank you, Ron. It is distracting. Is this better? Is this better now? All right, there we go. Councilmember Bates?
I have the privilege of attending the Military Affairs Meeting, Committee Meeting at the base. I would say the, probably the most important item to come out of that was the fact that Bates needs, especially with you and a lot of the management personnel at the base are trying to work to get more federal funding for those projects, and certainly anything we can do as a city to help them is in our best interest because it keeps that facility as a emergency services facility for Southern California. That's important. We've got on the agenda here, we had a good, very good meeting that was supposed to last an hour, went, I think, over two hours of the Solid Waste Committee to develop the RFP. There was a good league briefing that I attended on Zoom that talked about all the state legislation that was being lined up that the state thought was good, a lot of it is very good, but I never heard anybody talking about how they were going to pay for it. It was more a case of, oh, here are all the good things we want to do at the state level, and we'll pass that down on to the cities and unfortunately let them figure out how to pay for it, so not good news. Last thing is, I attended a Zoom meeting of a kind of an interesting group that you wouldn't ordinarily associate with local government. It was the Council of Foreign Relations, and they had a program for combating extremism at the local level, and when we've seen some of what's gone on with some of the unreasonable pressure that our local school district has gotten, I think it was a very informative presentation. That completes my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Dobie?
Speaking to the mic. All right, so since the last time I met with all you fabulous folks, I attended my Human Relations Committee meeting. OC Vector's got a lot of my time. I was, attended the Budget Standing Committee for them, the Policy and Personnel Committee, the Operations Committee. Side note, when you're selecting a committee, make sure that they do not meet on the same day. That notice for free. I was also the representative for the City of Los Alamos for the SCAG General Assembly, and I was also on the Chamber Zoom meeting, which I think are really cool. I'm glad that we can still, in some degree, meet with our local businesses, and we can still acknowledge those that are coming into our community, that are coming to bring dollars here. It really makes me happy that there are some things that did not have to go completely to the wayside, but we have figured out how to virtually keep making it happen, and that's what I've been up to.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink?
So, a pretty quiet month as far as events, but I'm looking forward to that changing quickly. Hopefully, I believe we're doing the Fourth of July event, so that's something to look forward to, everybody, which is always nice. Just OCFA, pretty quiet. We're adopting our budget this next month, $460 million budget for 1,100 firefighters and 72 fire stations, so it's a little big, but things are good. The sales tax, or the property tax, we haven't seen a downturn in that based on COVID, so that's all good. And then we've had a lot of base activity, especially this last weekend. We had a change of command, which was the 21 cannon salute, so it was seven cannons shooting off four times, and if you weren't prepared for it, it kind of rattled you a little bit. And then we also had a big Marine training there, so lots of activity. They do a very, very good job as far as posting on Nextdoor and Facebook and through the city, different things that they're having so you can kind of forewarn people and dogs and car alarms and everything else. But I do want to remind everybody that the base was here before the city. It is two square miles. Our city is also two square miles, so it's half, you know, it's basically 50% of our land. And I just really want to remind people, just turn the complaints into blessings. We are so blessed to have a base here, one of the only bases left in Orange County, one of the few bases left in Southern California, and if you're complaining about cannons going off for a change of command at some generals or Marines training that are influencing the rest of the world, just kind of change the attitude and just remember that the base is one of our flagship things of Los Alamos, so that's it.
Thank you. So, one of the, one of the things I've been focused, I talk about every meeting, is the, obviously, the COVID situation, and I think if you've been following the news at all, it's a very positive picture lately. Every two weeks, the city, or the county of Orange has a telephone conference for all the mayors. I was not able to attend this past Friday. City Manager Simmons was able to attend, and he passed along some of the encouraging numbers. As of last Friday, or last Thursday, 67% of eligible individuals in Orange County had received at least one dose of a vaccine. 50% of Orange County residents are fully vaccinated. Obviously, the Pfizer vaccine has been approved for individuals 12 to 16 now. The positivity rate in Orange County is 1%. Health equity is below 1%, and the case rate is now at 1.7%. So, I think the idea is we will move into the yellow tier, tier if everything holds this week, and now that we've gotten used to all these colored tiers, they're going to go away next month, June 15th is the idea. So, it's a good thing. It means life is getting back to normal, and it does seem like, you know, the vaccine is, continues to be effective against all variants, at least the ones that we've seen here in the United States. So, that's all good news on that front. I did get a chance to go out to the Los Al Medical Center a couple of weeks ago for one of their vaccine clinics. Very impressive, extremely organized. Thank you to Robert Acosta for giving me a tour, along with some city hospital staff as well. Really nice operation there. I think they're cutting back on that. They were taking walk-in visits without an appointment for vaccinations, and the city also hosted, and Chet, perhaps you can talk about this some more, the city also hosted its own, right here in the community center, its own vaccine clinic as well. So, kudos to everyone who put that on. Excellent that we were able to do that for members of the community. I think we had a lot of people visiting from the report that I saw. I attended the Sanitation District meeting, as well as Administrative Committee meeting. We had a Budget Standing Committee meeting, I think last week, if I'm not mistaken, where we previewed the budget that we just reviewed tonight at 5 o'clock during a special meeting. And I participated in a town hall through the West Orange County Cities Group, along with Cypress Mayor John Pete, where we spoke with Assembly Member Sharon Quirk Silva. And also this Thursday, we'll be doing another one of those town halls with supervisor, our new supervisor, Katrina Foley, as well. So, our city website, I think, will have information about how to participate in that for anyone who's interested. I think it's also been on Facebook Live in the past as well, but information will be on our city website. I've also asked City Manager Simmons to provide an update next month on the homeless situation. A lot of residents ask about the homeless situation, what we're doing about the situation. You know, people are seeing encampment over on the riverbed as well, so I think it's a time, good time for an update about that situation and what the city's doing in services and our contribution to the local SPA as well, because again, this is something that residents are concerned about. So, we look forward to that presentation, and with that, I believe that's everything I had. With that, we'll move on to the items from the city manager.
Just a couple of quick updates for you. First, just to dovetail on some of the comments that you were making about the vaccine clinics. We did hold our first successful vaccine clinic here in the Civic Center. We were able to offer access to our residents of two different, I'm sorry, two different types of the vaccine, both the Pfizer and the Johnson &amp; Johnson. And through our partnership with the LAMC, we were the only city that was offering all option of having all three of the different vaccines for those individuals that that was an important choice for. So, I'd like to say that we put almost 300 people through that clinic. We have our next follow-up for them in June, sorry, June 2nd, where we'll be offering the second shots, and then also there's still a conversation of whether or not we'll be setting up a percent that at that time as well. The plan for the county is to start operating more and more of these local clinics as they launch up the operation of the super pods, just to provide more local access point for all of our employees. Again, I commend the council for now supporting the operations, seeing city staff doing work at the super pods, to stand those up and have those operating correctly for partnerships that are formed here locally with the Los Al Medical Center, also the City of Cypress and Silvich, in order to bring other mobile bots to the Los Allos. So, it's always encouraging to see these important things happen, and the work it's done, and the fact that a small city like ours can step in and lead that charge is something that I think the staff is incredibly proud of, so we thank you for that support. Did want to bring up a, this is more of a housekeeping issue. In review of some of the things that the staff is looking to change as time goes on, obviously, review of our purchasing policy, review of a lot of our internal services funds, one of the things that came up was the overall structure of staff reports and agendas. We're noticing that as we go through this, that it's clear there is a better way of presenting some of the information to the council. Some of this is a holdover from just past practices, and some of this is an opportunity to really look at just the way that we're presenting information in order to make it clearer to both the council and also to the residents at home, and that really is our overall goal. And so while this was something that we were going to work on in September, when we start to implement the new website, because it does have a module that allows for the tracking of agendas, we're going to move that process forward and start that revamping now, and with the goal of having a revised agenda and a staff report system for the council to review at our July meeting, and we're hopeful that by doing that, we can create a little bit more transparency and then also provide just a clearer picture to everybody moving forward. So, that's a main goal. Again, obviously, with myself, the city clerk and the city attorney.
Excellent, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Chet, on the pod, on the vaccine pod on June 2nd, is that going to be 16 and older, or now is it going to be 12 to 15 included as well?
It is really going to depend on the type of shots that we- It is really going to depend on the type of shots that we get. If we do get Pfizer, we will be going down to 12. However, it's important, and this is an important caveat. If you, if there is a child that falls into that category, the 12 to 18 range, we do require that, or more aptly, Orange County Health requires that a parent is there in order to authorize the child to go through and actually get the vaccine.
Okay, yeah, I know there was a lot of interest on the last one is when are the 12 to 15 year olds? So if June 2nd, that would be great. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, to the warrants. Do I have a motion or any questions?
Just two quick questions, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that both Craig and Chet have helped me with many of the questions. Let's go to page two at the end there. And I think the city manager's already indicated that they're going to take a look at this in the future. But if you'll notice on here, on page two and three, we're talking about a lot of action. And I think the thought here is that if we can consolidate all the copier use into one contract, we probably can save some money for the city. So the city manager's indicated that that's on their list of things to look into so that in the future, we might be able to consolidate the copier requests into, into one contract. So that, that was one point I wanted to make. Then the second point is on page four. And I think this may just be a title change. I was going to say, when I saw that we were having a City Hall phone for $473 a month, I was kind of curious there. And I, I guess that really is covering, if I've got this right, Chet, all the City Hall phones?
That is correct, sir.
Oh, okay, good. I'm, I'm good, Mr. Mayor. I'll move the warrant register.
A second.
Madam Clerk, will you take, take roll?
A motion by Councilmember Doby. Second by Mayor Protem Hasselbrink. Local Mayor Trico.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Doby.
Aye.
Councilmember Napolda.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Are there any items that would, that you would like to pull? Go ahead, Ron.
Sure. Some of these are just questions more than, you know, needing separate action. But I'd either like to ask questions or make specific comments on E, G, I, and J. Some of this relates to what the city manager just mentioned on the staff reports. But the action that the city council takes on the staff reports, I think, needs to be consistent. And, and three critical components there of each recommendation need to be, who are we contracting with? How much is it for? And what is the term? And unfortunately, some of these don't indicate that. And I think the city manager is going to work to make sure that happens. But on E specifically, the comment, I guess I object to on E, is despite the fact that we like what Chet does and all that, the city really, manager really can't approve budget. And if you look at item number two there, it's authorized the city manager and/or his designate to approve any change to the schedule. And this has to do with the museum activity plan, those I have no problem with, and budget. But technically, the council is the only one that really can change the budget there. Now, the city manager has indicated that he understands that. So there's probably not a problem with our approving it out as it's written. But I just want to emphasize that in terms of this agenda item.
And if I, if I may, just make a comment as well. And again, I do completely understand the, the setup of, with regards to budgeting and where exactly authority lies with regards to the approval of the budget. I, I completely agree with, with the sentiments. And this is one of those that we will be looking to change as we go forward. Not assigning these kind of authorities to inappropriate places.
Well, I had a quick question on that. Ron, I'll piggyback on you. The museum budget isn't a city budget for us to approve or not approve. It's just a part of their agreement of being able to use that space that they give us insurance, a timeline of events, and a budget. But I don't think we can go back and say, we don't like your budget, make cuts here, make cuts there, correct?
Well, so there are a couple of, I want to call in-kind or different places where we actually do interact with their budget, mainly one of them being with regards to the service that we provide to the building. We do provide janitorial services there. We are going to be budgeting within our CIP projects, the painting of the water tower and such. So there are a number of places where we do interact. But technically, yes, you are correct that they do have funding that they receive through alternative sources that are not sitting.
Because we approved the CIP budget, so we're approving those pieces. But I can't imagine a scenario where they would come present the budget and would reject it even as a council because it's not, it'd almost be like accepting or rejecting the youth center budget. Correct?
It's true. The, the writing of the contract does allow for, does envision a process in which these items are taken before the city council. What exactly the remedy would be at the end of the day is, I, I think you are largely correct in what you were saying, that it is large, is as their budget.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on item G. And again, here, I guess the question, if you turn to page two of the staff report, is the numbers don't quite add up. It says, "The engineer's estimate for construction is $360,000. The remaining budget will cover design, inspection, contingency for construction." Well, if, if we look at the contingency and the inspection and design costs, usually those are running maybe 6% to 10% in that range. And if you look down further on that agenda under Measure M and then Suburbia Street Payment Project total, we're up to $459,000. So that's almost $100,000 difference. So I guess I'd like maybe a little discussion on that and some more specificity as to how much is going to design, how much is going to contingency, and how are we getting from the 360 to the 459?
Yes, sir.
I'll answer that question. And I have our city engineer here to assist and add it. But this report here is to go out and solicit bids.
Right.
And so when the bids come in and we do the project and everything, and afterwards, with our inspection fees that we have to do, and of course, contingency, like as you mentioned, of a change orders or et cetera. But it's, it's, those are the tied in, the majority of that amount is the inspection fee and during the project, and of course, the final inspection after the project.
So you're just telling us then, with this $459,000, that that's just money that you basically have available for this project? Not necessarily that you're asking us to budget it for this project?
That is correct. So we do anticipate it's 360. But, you know, again, City Manager Simmons kind of mentioned earlier that with projects, we don't know right now because of COVID. I, I talked to our city engineer, Chris, and I said, I, I, I hope it comes lower. But just in case it doesn't, we do have extra funds available, as you referred to.
Thank you. Just a quick comment on I. Again, if we take a look at the recommendation there, Mr. Mayor, we obviously, you know, need more specificity. What's the amount of the contract? You know, are we rebidding after one year? You know, how, the specific length of the contract? We can find some of that back further in the attachments. But that needs to be in what we're approving. So hopefully, we'll get to that point. And then the last one is on J. And I think the same comment applies to J. That if we take the 5,871 times, times 12, we come up with about $70,000. And you're asking in here for $77,000. So how are we getting from the 70 to the 77,000?
So that contract does incur some overtime fees. We don't have, our IT department doesn't have, they're not on, working for the city a full 40 hours. They're only budgeted, if I remember correctly, around 20 hours a week. So there are times, especially this past year with COVID and how we had to upgrade a lot of our IT technology, that is kind of like a contingency just in case we incur IT overtime costs.
So you're asking us basically for a 10% contingency and you'll only spend it if you need it?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all my questions.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions on any of the other consent item, items?
I'll go ahead and move.
Second.
Go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 11A. Appointment of the interim police chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all know, it's with a heavy heart that we move forward with this process. As you all know, the Chief of Police has announced his retirement. And while I was unable to successfully beg him to stay, he did offer to stay around for a while while we move through the transition. I believe this move is good in the guise of continuity while we plan for our future. And the chief has, I think, very graciously said that he will be willing to step in and help with that. And so as such, we brought forth this contract in order to transition him into the interim chief position. With that, I know that there are a number of code provisions that have to be adhered to here. And so I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney to make a verbal report.
Good evening. Pursuant to the Brown Act, prior to taking final action on executive compensation, we must offer a verbal report that summarizes that compensation. So to that end, I would offer that as a person who in it, if this appointment is made, the interim chief would work up to 960 hours per fiscal year at an hourly rate of $91.10 per hour. That amount is consistent with step E, excuse me, step E of the city's current salary schedule. Again, as a person who in it, the interim chief would not receive medical insurance to the city at this point. However, the interim chief would receive city-issued unmarked police vehicle for use in the course and scope of his employment and would receive and continue to receive a reasonable allowance for uniform and safety equipment. And with that, that concludes my summary of the benefits contemplated by this agreement.
So Mike, that includes use of a cell phone in that for his duties?
Actually, I would ask the benefits administrator if that's included within this. It's not specified in the contract itself.
So there are no additional benefits that relate to, relate to that position? So I, I'm going to say yes.
Because it's included under the concept of equipment necessary for the job?
That is correct, sir. So just like we would issue to all of our executive team, they have the ability to have a stipend for that. All of those, all of those type of issues that are required for the actual doing of the job, those would be, those would stay.
Got it.
City Manager, has the job been posted? Or what, what's the process and timeline we're looking at for the new chief position?
So based on the conversation that we have later on this evening, the item has been agendized in closed session. I anticipate that the process itself will take between four and five months in order to get ourselves to a finish line of having a candidate in the chair. There's obviously a number of things that go into that. Recruitment is one. My plan is to actually open the recruitment following the conversation with the city council this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Move the recommended action. A second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, we'll move on to 11B, review of engineering and traffic survey for speed limits.
Hello again. So every five to seven years, the city has to do a speed survey. And so the last time the City of Los Alamitos had done a speed survey was in April of 2014. So we were overdue for, I want to caveat that this wasn't really the ideal time to do a speed survey with COVID and, you know, just the, you know, crazy driving pattern. Even though the speed survey. In the morning. For the, you know, after a work rush. But again, Traffic Engineer Farhad, and I still said that with COVID, you know, it's just the, the normal driving pattern was not the same. But again, we have to do this within a five to seven year span. And the reason why we do a speed survey is to assist in terms of making sure that we can assist the PD department to do, you know, speed checks using electronic means, right? And to legally do so, we need to have a verified speed data. And so we went and did that, of course, through our consultant. 14 different segments on the six different streets. And the results were that no speed limit had to be changed. So basically, 85% of vehicles counted fall within a five mile range of the posted speed. And so the different segments that we had, again, it's here on the report, Ball Road, Bloomfield, Toritos. Again, the arterial, Cattella of the city all fell within the 85% tile. So recommended is no speed changes or no posted speed changes at this time. Again, you know, we have to do this every five to seven years. So hopefully, the next time we do this, one thing that I want to caveat is we have a lot of. San District Project, Interchange Project. And so that, you know, four to five year projects. So I'm hoping to do this speed survey the next round after all of the projects are completed.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions?
Yeah, I had one quick question. I remember doing this when I first came onto council. And I was a little confused about how we dealt with the results. And I remember specifically on Bloomfield. The survey came back that said we weren't in the 85% range of the speed posted. So we just increased the speed limit, which I don't know how that makes us safer. If you could kind of explain that to me. It's just like, I'm glad that we're falling in the 85% range, but I didn't understand why on Bloomfield with all the schools and everything, that we were increasing it from 35 to 40 miles an hour because everybody was just driving that anyway.
So according to the California Vehicle. Miles hour. So at that time, and I apologize, I don't know the history of raising that speed limit because if you find someone in excessive speeding or reckless driving, again, the PD department cannot use radar to like that. And. Allowed to have a speed traffic. Now you're basically having a speed traffic. So you can either. To either A, post the above-recommended speed posting to, again, within that five miles an hour range, or you just basically don't allow radar. And you have to basically notify the police department that during the segment, the only way you could issue a citation is to pace the car.
Yeah, I was just, I was concerned because instead of everybody going 40 miles an hour, hour, now they're going 45 and 50.
Correct.
And when do we stop? As far as just, you know, 70 down Farquhar seems about average, so let's just post it 70. Yeah, I mean, it's, but it's true. I mean, so when are we going to start enforcing the speed limit? And I know there's limitations on that as opposed to just keeping, and we become the autobahn, you know, by the turn of the century.
I will make just a couple of comments, just because it is completely counterintuitive as to how exactly this benefits, especially when you're trying to clamp down on speed. One of the things that we will be looking to do, especially with all of our street projects, is again, traffic calming. Where can we add these elements in to physically force the driver to slow down as they're going through these sections? And obviously, the far extreme of that is speed humps, and obviously, not exactly something we're recommending at this moment, but how do we implement those smaller changes that don't cost as much but allow us to try to clamp down on that speed going forward? And ultimately, a lot of the ties into some of the things that you saw within. Having a police force that is completely staffed and has the ability to deploy motor officer to different areas throughout town, just the visual of that alone, it does do a lot to slow down traffic. So those are going to be the type of elements that we're looking for here and make sure that. But just in terms of the overall question as to how exactly showing a higher speed is going to slow down traffic.
And I think that's where the motorcycle officer comes into play, unless we have some really fast bike riders.
We're, we're working on that.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
But to add on, again, there, I think you mentioned right now, I put in that crosswalk by Southland Credit Union.
Mm-hmm.
Latin. And, and, driving at school nearby with the yellow cross. Assist with this vehicle.
Okay, great, thank you.
Have to worry about higher speed limits, because I think that on many of our streets, and I'll use Cerritos as example, with all those new apartment complexes and condos that are being built, plus all the development that is being planned on the racetrack in Cypress, you'll be lucky if you can go 30 or 35 miles an hour on Cerritos. So I'm, I'm just saying that in a way, that in itself, the development, which isn't necessarily good from, from a facilitating transportation point of view, certainly may be good for limiting the speed that people can go on the major, some of the major arteries.
All right, I think we're, look. Go ahead, chief.
Anyways, I was going to say.
Whoa, there we go.
What, as far as Mayor Protim's point on the 85th percentile, and I think the city managers agrees with you, it does sound counterintuitive. I sit as an executive member for the state of California on this Strategic Highway Safety Plan, and they're actually reviewing the 85th percentile as probably something they want to start moving away from. And that's one of the adoptions that they're considering, because it doesn't make sense sometimes. And, and we know, especially when we know that most of the fatal, fatal accidents involve the factor of speed. And, and so we're raising speed limits sometimes, and people are just driving faster, so why are we doing that, right? And so we're actually reviewing that now as part of an overall complete strategic safety plan, highway safety plan. And we should probably have that. It, it's something, it's a five-year project that we've been working on, but it's something that's kind of probably come to fruition in the next three years.
Thank you.
All right, and I think we're looking for a resolution to be adopted here. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second from, who was that? Councilmember Bates?
True.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And I think that does it for our open session items. We're going to move into closed session next with the city attorney and city manager.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Council. Now, a journey into closed session to discuss items 12A and B as listed on this evening's agenda.
We, I don't.
It's 15 minutes of pain.
I know, I know. I don't think we've done this in person since I've been mayor, so apologies.
I think that just cost us 75 bucks.
He's here anyway.
Total hours.
He bills whether or not he talks.
True.
Thank you, everyone.